We do not have a quorum today, so there won't be a do-pass vote, which is our normal recommendation during this. And I'll ask our legal administrator to kind of explain some things if he feels up to it. However, we've gone through the trouble, for lack of a better term, of having our staff person here to present. So probably briefly, once we get into it, then we'll probably ask you to present and see if we've got any questions or public comment or anything like that, and then move forward. Mr. Lucas, is there?
Yes, thank you. Given the lack of quorum, this won't be a meeting of the council or the committee of the whole. You won't be able to take any official action. I don't see any reason why the group of members here can't still listen to the presentation that Ms. Columbrania had prepared. But the records reflect that the meeting of Committee of the Whole did not occur due to a lack of quorum.
Okay, thank you. And having heard that, we'll just get started. Today is Wednesday, August the 10th, 2022. About 6:35 in tonight's meeting is a semblance of a Committee of the Whole meeting. And tonight, what we're going to hear a report on and maybe discuss is Ordinance 22-21. That is to amend Title 8 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Historic Preservation and Protection to Establish a Historic District Regarding Bethel AME Church and Parsonage, Bethel AME Owner and Petitioner. We have asked this evening to attend Ms. Gloria Columbrania. And the synopsis is as follows for Ordinance 22-21. This ordinance amends Chapter 8.20 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled The List of Designated Historic Districts in order to designate the Bethel AME Church and Parsonage as a historic district. The owner and petitioner, Bethel AME, sought this action and the Bloomington Historic Preservation Commission, after a public hearing on July 14th, 2022, recommended that the structure be designated historic with a rating as outstanding. This rating was based upon certain historic and architectural criteria set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 8.08.101 subset E entitled Historic District Criteria. Local designation will provide the protection needed to ensure that this property is preserved. Ms. Columbrania, are you prepared and ready? Thank you.
Can you hear me now? Excellent. Give me one second and let me share the presentation. Share the screen. Excellent. So this evening, I come to present the nomination for the Bethel AME Church and Parsonage located at 302 and 308 North Rogers Street. I believe it was last few weeks ago, about a month ago. I cannot give you the exact date, but the petitioners, the congregation itself nominated the church. They had been in conversation with both Commissioner Elizabeth Mitchell and myself for various months in terms to determine how the process was going to be. That said, the staff wholeheartedly recommends that the property known as Bethel AME Church and its parsonage be designated as a local historic district. After careful consideration of the application and review of the historic district criteria as found in Ordinance 9520 of the municipal code, staff finds that the property not only meets, but exceeds the minimum criteria listed on the code. So the criteria meets, sorry, the property meets criteria 1A. And I just want to remind, criteria 1A means that it has a significant character, interest, or value as part of the development heritage or cultural characteristics of the city, state, or nation, or is associated with a person who played a significant role in local, state, or national history. So in this case, the church provided a safe communal space for many members of Bloomington's black community in the early 20th century and before, and until this day. And prominent members such as Mrs. Mattie Jacobs Fuller raised a considerable amount of money to make sure that the congregation owned both the land and the building. And by considerable, I mean $13,000 in 1920s, '30s day, which translates to about $200,000. And she did this by performing on her organ, which still, and the congregation can correct me, still exists within the building, within the church. The property meets criteria 1C. And 1C means that it exemplifies the cultural, political, economic, social, or historic heritage of the community. And in this case, it is because it has served as one of the main social-cultural hubs of Bloomington's black community, as a social hub for congregants and Indiana University students alike. So at a time when there were maybe eight or 10 black university students here in Bloomington, and they came from all over Indiana and all over the United States, they would come to the church for dinner at least once a week, and they would have a community to bond with. The property meets criteria 2B, and I'm just gonna, I like reading it just so we know what we're talking about, is the work of a designer whose individual work has significantly influenced the development of the community. In this case, this is an exemplary work of John L. Nichols, perhaps Bloomington's earliest architect of renowned work. So John Nichols has done a lot of projects in Bloomington, and this is one of, I don't know, I think it's one of my favorite of his works. And he did many fabulous works in this town in the early 20th century. The property meets criteria 2G. So that means that it exemplifies the built environment in an era characterized by its distinctive architectural style. And here I have that it exemplifies the Classical Revival style, although I have to go back to the staff report and verify that because there were some discrepancies between SHARD, the state archaeological and architectural records, and the National Register nomination. So this is the map with the location of the site. I'm sure that if anybody steps out outside, we can actually, from the parking lot here, see it. Both the church and its parsonage are located in an extraordinarily historic area of this town, nestled right in the middle of the West Side National Register Historic District, and nestled between many local historic districts, the closest of which is the Johnson Creamery, which was nominated and designated this year. This building where we are, the Showers Brothers Factory, where many of the congregants were employees, and the near West Side Neighborhood, which had an integrated community for a long time. So it is a piece of that puzzle of the history, not just of Bloomington, but this region in Bloomington. So for a little bit more context, the congregation, the church actually was opened as a community or began and established itself in Bloomington in 1870. Its original location was closer to the Courthouse Square. And this is a, I like this image because all you can see at the very end is a steeple. And that was the steeple of the church that they were using, which was originally a Presbyterian church that the Bethel AME Church was using for their congregation at the time. But they wanted their own building. They wanted a building that was designed for them, for their needs, and that would be a home for the community. And so in 1922, the church was built. Many of the materials, the limestone, was sourced locally, and a lot of it was donated. They used a local architect, they used the best architect they could find locally. The community raised the money to both pay off the mortgage for the land and for the construction from the 1920s to 1945. When they finally paid off the mortgage, they did a mortgage-burning ceremony. And that was documented in the newspapers. And here is a photo of Mrs. Mattie Jacobs Fuller, Fuller, sorry, who was an extraordinarily important member of Bloomington's community in general. She enriched life here through her music, through her community participation, through her involvement with her church, and left an indelible mark. I really like this image. It's of the interior of the church with the congregation in 1945, when they burned the mortgage. And that is also something very symbolic, the ownership of land, the have carving out the space and really making it home. We are here, this is ours, we are here to stay. Here are some images of the church, of the exterior, from the southwest and from the south-looking north. Here are some additional images. So the, right now, the, sorry, stained glass is barely visible from the outside, but that is because it's currently being protected with additional storm windows. I also wanted to showcase a bit of the parsonage, which was built in 1925 and represents a worker's cottage, very typical of this area. And it had been restored in the mid-2000s through a huge intensive effort by the community. And that is my presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Columbrania. And again, we don't have a quorum this evening, so we will not be doing an official vote, do-pass recommendation vote tonight. And I would encourage the public, and we'll give you an opportunity to speak tonight if you want. But I would encourage you to show up next week, next Wednesday, at the regular council meeting, which this body will be voting to approve or not approve that. So without further ado, I will go to my council colleagues. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Columbrania? Councilmember Sandberg?
I was just seeing some members of the HPC. I don't know if they wanted to add to this presentation at all before we went to council questions or before we maybe even just went to the public for comment this evening. I would love to hear it. I think we're going to consider this a listening session tonight, so let's take advantage of it.
My name's Duncan Campbell. It's pretty clear from the presentation that this nomination meets almost all the criteria that we have. And that's pretty unusual. And I have to say, sometimes we're looking for criteria, and there wasn't any problem here. And aside from the obvious cultural importance and significance of this building's congregation and its importance to the history of the city of Bloomington, as the social history component of the criteria, it's also true that the architecture itself is truly outstanding. And that's kind of unusual also. This is already, this building's already in the West Side National Register District, where it was recommended to have an outstanding rating. That's the highest rating there is. And the fact that John Nichols, the architect, designed and built it at the time that he built it, which was, if you know the history of the world and the history of America, it was a hard time, okay? It's post-Reconstruction, da-da-da-da-da-da. Nichols was born in 1859, at the beginning of the Civil War, and was the son of an architect slash builder. There weren't any architecture schools at the time that his father was practicing, so he was a contractor, builder, master builder, if you like. And his son aspired to be an architect. He also did not have a formal architectural training. But in, there's a book called Nichols Artistic Dwellings, which was a pattern book that he published and passed out and sold among the public in Bloomington and as well as in Illinois, Ohio, some other states, which represented his buildings. The original copy of that used to be at the History Museum. It's been lost, but there are copies of it. And there are still renderings of the houses. And several of those houses are extant in Bloomington. So we not only have the architect's record, but we have the physical record, including the record of this church. He's said to have been responsible for over 600 buildings in the year 1908. I mean, that's prolific. So he had 20 architects and draftsmen working for him in the building that he designed, the old First National Bank on the corner of College and Fifth Street. He was a big deal in his own time. He was also a very well-known portrait photographer and took photographs of lots of Bloomington's prominent citizens at the time. So we have somebody here who is really special in our community and who built, you know, quite a special building for a special community. This is, I'm not going to read this. This is a list of 50 extant Nichols buildings in Bloomington. We think there were over 400 at one time. So when we see more Nichols buildings, or any more Nichols buildings threatened, we'll be back. So I mean, a few of them, just so you'll recognize, Wiley Hall, the Kirkwood Observatory, the Nichols House and Studio, Sigma Chi, the Fraternity Building, the World Courier Building, the Princess Theater, the Von Lee Theater, the Showers Brothers Administration Building, da-da-da-da-da-da. This man knew what he was doing, and he found a good client in his, in this effort. And so I really, I really think we've got a winner here. Thank you.
And before you leave, sir, I forgot to ask you at the beginning, and we all know and love you, but can you identify yourself for the public?
Yeah, Duncan Campbell. I thought I said that.
Oh, did you? Okay, I'm the slow one then. Thank you, Duncan.
I'm an advisory member to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Yes, sir. And I will invite Ms. Mitchell, if you have something you'd like, as a commissioner, to be part of this presentation, please.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Mitchell. And I'm the commissioner for the Historic Preservation. I'm also the African-American history historian for Monroe County. And I just want to say that Mattie Jacobs Fuller is like Madame C.J. Walker and Marian Anderson rolled into one. And I think that, I'm sorry I was late, but you've probably explained to everybody that Mattie Jacobs Fuller purchased the lot, paid for the foundation. She played her little organ out on the courthouse lawn every weekend, raised over $13,000 for that building. So it's really important for the African-American community. And that's probably the least we can do to recognize Mattie Jacobs Fuller for the community. And Bedford is the crown jewel of Bloomington, built in 1870. So I think that's something that we could do for Bloomington. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if we have folks sitting out here inside, in the public, that wish to speak, if you could work your way to the podium, then we will get to that, if you choose to have some public comments. But we will now go to our council colleagues, if we have any questions. Councilmember Smith?
I don't have any questions. Can I make a comment at this point?
We'll have comments.
Okay, thank you.
You're quite welcome. Any questions from council? Councilmember Sandberg?
I do. I mean, obviously, this meets all of the criteria for historic designation. I think this is going to be a pretty simple vote when we get to it next week. My question has to do with, does designating this give the Bethel AME Church any additional advantages by way of tax credits if they want to make improvements to the building? What additional advantages will this have for the congregants?
That's a very, very, let me take this off. That's a very, very good question. So we don't have local tax credits for historic preservation. Those are relegated to national and state level. We do, we are working with them. We started a conversation about possible BUEA facade grant use for restoration work, and that's a grant that they can apply for. So we've started the conversation, and, you know, we'll get there at some point, I believe. But that would be kind of it. The local designation is to both provide a recognition to the space and provide a potential additional protection in case things change in the future. You never know if there might be a very creative young pastor one day who wants to put a steel tower on it or something like that, and the congregation might want to keep it as it is now. So its function is not exactly a monetary one, although we do try to help as much as we can with the limited funding the city has.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more questions? Okay, we'll move to public comment. I would ask those that are on Zoom, if you intend to make a public comment, please indicate so by using the raised hand function at the bottom of Zoom, or you can send our meeting host a note in chat indicating your desire to speak. Mr. Lucas, do you see anyone on Zoom? And if there's anyone here that wants to publicly speak, you can move to the podium.
I don't see any takers on Zoom at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Could you please identify yourself?
Yes, hello everyone.
If needed, you have five minutes.
I'm Nancy Cross Harris. And that's my sister Betty Lewis. We are members of Bethel and have been so for over 30 years. Love the place, really enjoy where we are. So we know that Bethel got started back many, many years ago. April 10th, 1816 was the very first church built. Today, we can look, Bethel AME have grown churches all over the world. There's over 2 million churches, Bethel-like AME churches all over the world. But still, Bethel's mission remains the same. It's a beautiful building. We know that, architecturally built inside and out. You know, as old as it is, it's been kept. We make sure of that. We keep it up, and Sister Lewis and I, and some others helped to do so. And so that's just show, you know, our love for it. And, you know, we're really looking forward to making sure that we have the historic behind it, you know, the preservation behind it, so that we can feel safe about that, you know, going forward. And so again, you know, we have, we have a mission that we carry on within, you know, the building itself. You know, it's beautiful, again, and as pretty as it is. We, as Christians, there serve and we minister to spiritually, intellectually, physically, emotionally, and environmental needs of all people, all people, by spreading Christ's liberating gospel through word and deed. Okay? Seeking out the lost and serving the needs of those in prisons, hospitals, nursing homes, the sick and shut-in, community street corners, and school systems. So, you know, we try not to leave anyone out, you know, any stone unturned. And just, you know, just want to keep on moving forward and doing, doing what's right and sharing God's love. That's about all I got to say.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. While we're looking to see if we have anyone else ready, Mr. Lucas, you can also check and see if we've got anyone else on Zoom. Do we have anyone present in the public that would care to speak? Thank you. Please identify yourself. You have about five minutes, if you choose.
Hi, my name is Betty Lewis, and I'm a member of Bethel AME Church. And our reverend is Eddie D. Howard. I haven't been there as long as Nancy, so my history is not as long. My son-in-law and his wife pastored at Bethel, and I believe that's why I was a member. And I have continued to go because I love Bethel. It's very warm, generous, and we do a lot of community work. I'm a member of the Women's Missionary Society there and have been for, I guess, the last 10 years. And as Nancy said, we do work all over the world. So from what I've seen, Bethel has contributed to this community, and I believe they wholeheartedly, we wholeheartedly deserve to be historically preserved. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Lewis. Last chance for anyone on Zoom, Mr. Lucas.
I see no takers.
Okay, thank you. And seeing none, we'll now go to council members for any final comments. Councilmember Sandberg?
Well, first of all, I thank everyone who came tonight. I think one of the reasons why we felt it was important to call this Committee of the Whole was to not only share with the public what we're hoping to do here, but to also provide the education that I think our public deserves to have about the rich history that this particular congregation has certainly given to the city of Bloomington. And so it is my hope that even though tonight is not going to be any kind of a binding vote on this, that you will return next week, when things do get put on the record, when the minutes are taken, and make sure that people who want to come and speak on behalf of the history of this church and how important it is to designate will be here and will kind of join us in a celebration of this. Again, these are important things to protect and preserve and to remember and think about, not only about the history, but about the work you continue to do on behalf of service. And I was very, very delighted to hear that, how active you are in the community in being of service to not only your congregants, but to others in the community. So thank you. Hope to see you next week. And I intend to vote yes on this when I have the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg. Any more comments from Councilmember, Councilmember Smith?
We do a lot of things as council members. And this is, this is a really great thing to do, to play a small part in helping designate such an important cultural and architectural building and entity in our community. So I'm really happy to be able to do something in our small way. And thank you very much for bringing this forward and letting us do this. And come back next week, and we'll, I'll vote it up as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember, oh, no, you don't have to, I'm sorry.
Well, just to say that I agree with my colleagues, and I really appreciate you all coming out this evening. This is, historic preservation, to me, is one of the most important things that we do, I feel, preserving Bloomington's history. Unfortunately, we've lost so much. I'm sure we've lost Nichols buildings, many of them, and hopefully in other cultural, you know, significant places in the community. So this is a wonderful opportunity for us. And I appreciate the work that the commission has done and the petitioners for coming and requesting this. So I intend to vote yes. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. And I'll finally say, on next week, I do intend to support this ordinance, Ordinance 22-21, and I will vote yes. But my comment, and I really appreciate Councilmember Sandberg speaking on the historical part or the educational part. I think that's very, very important. And this isn't part of the ordinance. But since we do have this public platform, I think it's important to know for many people that don't know that AME are acronyms for African Methodist Episcopal. So I think sometimes we can go Bethel AME, AME, and we don't really get into what the African Methodist Episcopal, that genre, or that designation. The AME Church was founded in 1787 in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, by a small group of people led by a gentleman named Mr. Richard Allen. I happen to be very happy to know some of this history because even though I am a very proud and dedicated member of Second Baptist Church here in Bloomington, I was born and raised at Bethel AME in Muncie, Indiana. So I would be very, very happy to support this. And I probably shouldn't say anything, but I just got to say, we've got people from the public that have come here to share their voices this evening. We have staff that is here to make a presentation. We've got a couple Historic Preservation Commissioners here. I personally think it's a bit of a disservice that we don't have at least five people here on this council as a quorum to conduct proper business. Okay? That's all I'll say about that. Now, we have no other items on our agenda this evening. And if there's no objections, I I would like to adjourn. Seeing no objections, we are...
Just a point of information, there's no need to adjourn because this wasn't immediate.
Well, you're exactly right. Thank you very much, and thank you all, and hope to see you all next Wednesday.